To order, we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Is that your name tag? Did you even look?
I didn't even look.
So, Camille. Those are my minutes. So, just so I get a sense, if you could by a raise of your hand indicate whether you're here because you're interested in 171 Coronado, would you please raise your hand?
Oh.
Okey dokey. I was just asking because I didn't want people to have to wait around longer than necessary, but we're going to go ahead and call the go in order. So first, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman is absent tonight, as well as Commissioner Marsters. Commissioner Harper Pedersen.
Present.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Present.
David Silverman.
Present.
So, the next item is public comment. This public comment period is limited to items that are not on the agenda. If you're here to speak to an item on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak later. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is anyone here because they want to make a public comment on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, the next item is the approval of the draft minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? I have no changes. Does anyone else have any changes?
I don't have any changes.
Move deeper to the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, so next is our public hearing. So, the procedure for a public hearing is that the staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendation. The applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form, at least we ask you to, makes it easier for the record, found by the door, and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. So, the first item for the public hearing is consideration of an application by legacy partners regarding the Transit Village. Does staff have a presentation?
Good evening. I'm Colette Manier, I'm the contract project planner who's been processing the applications for the mixed-use project.
Did I just turn you on or did I just turn you off? I just pressed a button.
You turned her on.
That's good, right?
You turned her on.
It should come up here?
All right.
So, this is an overview of the four buildings within the mixed-use portion of the San Carlos Transit Village Plan Development area. In the second building from the left, you'll see a small area identified as roof deck. And that is what we're here to talk about tonight. This project has been approved. The change we're looking at is the permission to modify building to add approximately 2,000 square feet of roof deck. This is the roof plan for the building, and it shows the area that is a roof deck. Going off towards the left is an exit path that would go across the roof to the stair tower. There would be an elevator that would open within the roof deck. And extending off to the right is a straight flight of stairs that would go down to the exterior's open stair hallway that is on the third story below. And this is a larger picture showing the roof deck. It would include a sunscreen, barbecue areas, seating areas, and a fire pit on the roof. This is a diagram that shows, looking at the roof edge of the building, what would be visible above the already approved line of the roof. And it shows that the elevator tower is the portion that would be visible. That portion of the building is the size, basically, of an elevator car, and it has a roof on it. So, it's a relatively small portion of the building. This shows elevation to the stair tower, which also has to be increased in height in order to provide stair access. And again, that shows, again, from the east side, from the residential neighborhood, the stair tower would not be visible. And that is in part because it is placed more towards El Camino Real in the building. This is an elevation looking to the northeast, standing on El Camino Real. And you can see highlighted is the small portions of the change in the building to accommodate the roof deck. You would see a small part of the elevator tower and some corners of the roof deck trellis, as well as some additional roof deck railing would be the visible changes from this perspective. And this is also along El Camino Real, but looking towards the south, you would see the increased height in the stair tower. And from this perspective, you would also see the top of the elevator tower and part of the trellis that is shading part of the roof deck area. This is a view taken from Inverness, an old county road. And you can see, highlighted there with the, pointed out, that the stair tower, or I'm sorry, the elevator and the mechanical penthouse of the elevator is the most visible. Also, an increased height in the stair tower. And you can also see a green wall. So, although the deck is placed towards the El Camino side of the building, what you're seeing is a six-foot-tall solid wall that would be landscaped on both sides that would provide a backdrop to the deck area and, basically, protect the neighborhood from any oversight from people using that area. And this is a view from Old County Road at Sylvan, showing the, what's visible in change from the building, which is primarily, again, the elevator tower. The conditions of approval, basically, include a language that modifies the existing approved design review to incorporate this change. It also includes two conditions. One is a limitation in hours of use from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. as a maximum window. The management of the apartments can limit it further or change it to be different between weeknights and weekends. That would be their prerogative. And secondly, a condition about the solid six-foot wall landscaped on both sides that would be along the eastern side of the roof deck. With that, I have the recommended motion, and I'm available for any questions that the Commission may have. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time? No. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Yes. With legacy partners. It's been a while. Sorry, I don't know how to do this. We, over the last, whatever, how's it been, six, eight months since we were approved by the Planning Commission with the design review, have been moving forward toward construction of the project, working on the working drawings we submitted for plan check a couple of months ago. And during this time, this is the time we've been working on our financing, and we have made an arrangement with a financial partner to be our partner in the project. They happen to be here, and they're very involved in the multifamily business. And through this process, they brought up the prospect of a roof deck. They have been doing them on all of their newer projects, frankly, we have as well. And we started the process with our architect, which, you know, Sherri Scott will get up and, you know, explain more about the roof deck and certainly answer any questions. And through that process, came up with what we thought was the most appropriate method of implementing it and to be able to deliver this feature to the residents. And it's become a very important amenity, an amenity expected in most of the higher-end communities throughout California and in other parts of the country as well. And we think it's an important amenity to include. It provides more open space, opportunity for folks to gather and, you know, be in the outdoors. One of the nice advantages is to be able to separate them more from El Camino than some of the other open spaces which are in closer proximity to El Camino, so a little bit more privacy. And because, you know, it's up on the third floor and oriented the way it is with the roofs around it, it's not obtrusive to anyone else in the community. We took the effort to meet with Scott Marsters. Because we learned he wouldn't be here, so we met with him about a week ago to make sure he had an opportunity to review and comment. He seemed generally supportive and...
Anything about trees?
No, he didn't.
Checking.
And he was generally supportive and liked the idea of adding, you know, amenities to make it a better, you know, better environment or the best possible environment. Also, shared the plan with the greater east side through Ben Fuller. And that was electronically transmitted to them early last week so that they would have the opportunity to share it among members of the community, and we've not...
So, for the record, we have an email that was written by Ben Fuller to Sherri Scott, and Sherri Scott forwarded it to Lisa Porras, who printed it. And it's a June 1st, 2015, which I guess would be today, email from Ben Fuller where he indicates in all caps that we are not going to oppose this new rooftop space. So, that will...
Bring this...
That will be, that will be made part of the record.
Well, I've received an email from Ben like this, so...
Well, it was, we had a nice conversation two weeks ago, and we've been sharing with him the information, and we wanted him, them fully informed. And it's, you know, it's just an all-plus type of an amenity for, you know, for the community, and no one seems to have any objection to it. We wanted to share that information, and with that, I'll give you Sherri.
Actually, Colette did a pretty thorough presentation of the roof deck, so I don't have a whole lot to add.
And don't feel obligated. I mean, you don't have to do a presentation.
Just to let you know, I'm available for any questions that you guys may have on the design, but just to emphasize, three points in the design that we considered because of the sensitivity to the east side. First is that we oriented the roof deck towards the El Camino side of the building, so it's, as far as we could get it, oriented towards the west side of the building. It's more than 30 feet from the eastern edge. Secondly, we've, we have a solid green screen, which is six-foot tall facing the east side. And that was one thing that Scott Marsters mentioned when we talked to him. He wanted to make sure that we weren't encouraging views to the east, so we're encouraging views to the west, rather. And then also, the exit path, I just wanted to clarify, to the stair on the north end of the building would only be used in case of emergency. For a roof deck, you have to have two means of egress, not counting the elevator. So, that exit path would not be used unless there was an actual event, a fire or something like that. So, the activity is really focused in that 2,000 square feet that's oriented towards El Camino.
Sherri, I have a question, and I think I know the answer, but do all residents have access to the roof deck or just the residents of Building 2?
All the residents of the project, yeah.
And Building 2 was selected because of its proximity to the other recreation space, the pool?
Correct. So, also, in the ground level of Building 2 is the lounge and the fitness center. So, this is where people will already be used to coming for their amenities, and so it's, that's why we chose Building 2.
Okay. Thank you.
I assume the green screen actually isn't live?
No, actually, it would be. And this is another point that Scott asked us to clarify, is that we will have planters up there with vines, and so there'll be irrigated planters.
So, he did ask about trees.
Well, he did have asked about the growies, because it does take some time for the green wall to fill in. So, what we're going to propose is a solid fence that you can't see through while it's growing.
Yeah, I was very disappointed in Scott if he didn't ask about whether the green screen was actually green. So, he did.
It actually, yeah, he did ask. And we had proposed it to be more of an open, you've probably seen it more like a cage-like structure to support the vines, but he was concerned about still being able to see through that while the vines were growing. So, it's easy enough for us to make a solid fence that has the vines growing on it. So, that's what the plan is.
Anyone have any other questions for the architect or the applicant? No?
I have one more question for staff.
Okay. Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you. I just wanted to check and see, was, did anybody else from the public have any correspondence other than what was on the dais from Ben?
We received nothing else and no other verbal inquiries or comments.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Oh. You know what? I didn't ask whether there was any public comment. So, I'm going to ask, well, there hasn't been a vote, so it hasn't actually passed yet. Is there anyone here in the public? I have no speaker slips. Is there anyone here in the public who wishes to be heard on this application? Seeing none, I think there's a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Okay. So, any comments, deliberation from the Commission?
I think a roof deck is a lovely idea.
Yeah, definitely great use of space, and we got an email from Ben Fuller, so we're good.
I will entertain the motion.
Sorry, let me just, oh, I'll do it. I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving the modification to the design review approval for the mixed-use project in the San Carlos Transit Village Plan Development, subject to the conditions and findings set out in the resolution.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion passes.
Yeah, that was a record. Definitely for Transit Village.
For those of you who aren't familiar with the Transit Village, I think this may be, and I'm going to slightly exaggerate, our 20th meeting on the Transit Village, and usually they go hours. They're measured in hours, not minutes. In any event, I am going to reopen the public hearing for the purposes of discussing 171 Coronado Avenue. I'm not going to reread the entire admonition, because I believe everyone who was, is here now, was here when I read it the first time. I'll just observe again that if you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence, the city delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So, is there a presentation from staff on this item? Wow, there's brownie time. Anybody want a brownie? I really want to get rid of these brownies.
Oh, no.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Andrea Martisich, and I'll be presenting this item this evening. The item before you is a request for design review approval to construct a new 3,911-square-foot residence, a waiver for the overall height requirement, a variance from the natural state requirement, a variance from the downhill building face requirement, a grading and dirt haul certificate, and a tree removal permit. The project site is a vacant lot located on Coronado Avenue on the uphill slope of the street. It was previously zoned as a planned development and was rezoned to RS6, single-family residential with the last zoning code update. As part of this code change, the property also became subject to the regulations and guidelines of the hillside overlay district due to its slope. The surrounding uses are single-family residential. The lot itself is 9,684 square feet and has a 62% slope, which you can see on the picture on the right. There are several protected trees on site, all of which are proposed for removal. And this is an aerial view of the site and helps demonstrate the site in relation to the neighboring buildings. The site itself is outlined in a red line. The properties in the upper portion of the screen are Coronado Avenue, and those on the lower portion, below the red outlined lot, are areas of Elston Court. So, this is the site plan. As I mentioned, the applicant's proposing to construct a 3,911-square-foot residence, which consists of three levels. Access to the site will occur from the driveway, which runs parallel to the street. And as the project is subject to the hillside overlay guidelines, there's a maximum slope of 18% for driveways. In this case, that necessitates the driveway being a lot longer. As if there were, as if it came straight off the street, it wouldn't be able to meet the 18% slope requirement. So, you can see it travels along pretty much the entire front of the property. The garage will face the side property line and is located five feet, two inches from the front property line. Again, in the hillside overlay district, there's a provision for garages to be located up to five feet from the front property line to accommodate the hillside, and this proposal is taking, or is asking for that exception to be located five feet, two inches. Normally, garages must be located 20 feet. However, in this case, the amount of grading to require, that would be, would be additional grading on top of what they already need. As you'll see, there's a pedestrian walkway leading from Coronado Avenue up through the site to the front entryway. So, this is the lowest-level floor plan. As you can see, the garage is on the left with a side entrance. This is approximately 1,133 square feet. It contains the garage, entrance to the house, as well as a bathroom and gym area, and then the required entry port area as well. The next level up, which is the second level, but calling it the main floor on here, is approximately 1,300 square feet. And as you can see, is mostly the living area, the living room, dining room, kitchen, as well as an office and one bedroom. The uppermost level, which is the third level, has the master bedroom suite, as well as two additional bedrooms. And you'll see a couple of roof decks in this area. I wanted to point these out because you'll see on the site plan, there's not a lot of outdoor area planned for the site. This is one way in which the proposal is trying to utilize some space without disturbing more natural state area, which I'll talk about in a minute. So, this is the front elevation of the house. You can see there's varying angles and roof lines, which help break up the mass of the residence. The architects have also designed the center of the residence to be set back from both the left and right sides to help avoid a large wall at the front. In terms of the lines, the dotted lines or the dashed lines, I should say, up at the top, represent the overall height of the home and the plate height. So, because I cropped this picture, it doesn't show all those, so I just wanted to point those out. For the rear elevation, you can see that the lowest level is not visible from this elevation. In this one, the dashed line up at the top is the 35-foot overall height requirement. I will talk about the waiver they're asking for in a minute, but that line represents where the house could be built to, or by code, by right. And then the other two dashed lines, again, are finished floors for the second and third levels. This is a left-side view of the residence. As you can see, most of this view, the house is built into the hillside, and it's not as visible. On the right side, it is a bit more visible. You can see the access to the garage, as well as greater portions of the second and third levels. On top of the garage is a proposed railing just for safety purposes, because that will be at grade. Whatever the building code requirement is, they'll provide a railing there to provide safety from falling. So, this is a rendering of the residence. This is looking, you know, up in the air. It's not down from the street, just so you can get a better idea of what the residence will look like. In terms of windows, I just wanted to point out here, since you can see most of them, the code requires that at least one inch of depth be provided around windows, or that the windows be recessed two inches from the wall. There is an exception process, or I'm sorry, as part of design review, the applicant can ask for an exception if providing that would take away from the architectural style of the proposal. In this case, the windows are not meeting those requirements, and the applicant is requesting an exception to this. Staff is supportive of that, as we feel that the modern and contemporary style of the residence is complemented by the proposed windows. And so, that is, that's just part of the design review request that the applicant is making. This is a view from the driveway. Again, as you can see, there's varying masses and wall lines to break up the residence. And then, again, another view of the residence from above. In terms of materials, applicant is provo, or excuse me, proposing several different materials. The walls would be comprised of hardy artisan lap siding in the citrine color. The, there's also proposing stucco in two separate colors and a darker trim. The wood trellis at the third level would be a stained-grade wood, and the garage door would also be painted wood. The railing I mentioned before, installed on top of the garage, would either be metal posts with glass or cable in between, and the windows will be aluminum clad in a smoke So, in terms of the waiver request, as I mentioned, the maximum allowable height in this district is 35 feet for hillside districts. In hillside districts, the height is measured a bit differently than sites that are not within the district. The 35-foot height is measured from the lowest finished grade, from where the structure touches, up to the highest point in the structure, regardless of whether the structure is right on top of itself or staggered across the hillside. So, in this case, the 35 feet is measured from the lowest finished floor, which is where the garage is located, to the highest point, which is where the clouded area is on the left, the roof eve. So, the municipal code allows waivers for various standards for up to 10% of the requirement. The intent of waivers is to allow for minor deviations from the code only. So, there's a limit to 10%, as I mentioned. So, in this case, the applicant is asking for an overall height waiver to allow the overall height to be 38 feet, 5 inches, which would be the 10% requirement. And on this elevation, the red line indicates maximum allowable height. And again, the clouded areas demonstrate the area that would encroach above that height limit. The line weight's a little bit light, so I tried to circle it, but you can see the portion that's, that's going above. There's no windows proposed above this, the maximum height limit, just the roof line and a small portion of the wall. So, due to the slope of the lot, and because it's in the hillside district, the applicants are required to provide a maximum natural state area of 85%. This includes the footprint of the residence, the driveway, retaining walls, light wells, any disturbed area. So, the greater the requirement for natural state... So, the greater the requirement for natural state, the less allowable area for the footprint of the residence, and the more likely that a house would need to be taller to get more square footage. The applicants have spent considerable time modifying the overall height, and this has been the final result. Originally, the applicants requested a variance for height-- let me get to that one-- a variance for height to allow 46-foot, three-inch structure, which would have been a four-story residence. The initial drawings were submitted for architectural peer review, and by working with the peer review architect, the applicant was able to redesign the residence to be one floor less and about eight feet less in height. The peer review architect reviewed the proposed changes, which are now in front of you, with planning staff, and staff is supportive of the reduced height. And in terms of changes, I think the two most significant areas-- there we go-- this area here on the right that I'm circling with the mouse was a lot taller than it is now, so I'll go back to the proposed. So, as you can see, the heights dropped significantly on that. And then, also, the entryway here was a floor above the entrance to the garage, whereas now, it's dropped down to grade. So, as you can see, the height has come down significantly from the hillside from the first proposal. Sorry, let me go back. Although the proposed plans is currently drawn, would require waiver on height. At no point does the residence exceed 28 feet at any point along the elevations, which is the maximum allowable height on RS6 properties not within the hillside district. But as I mentioned, the height here is measured from the lowest point, the garage, up to the roof. The existing lot is unique due to the slope. In order to design a residence with a minimal footprint and provide additional square footage similar to other homes, the proposal would need relief from the height requirements. The overall height of the home is affected greatly by the need to locate the garage further down slope, which drops the point from which we're measuring height down significantly. The residence will be located below the ridge of the hillside, and only a part-- the only part exceeding the overall height is that portion of the roof. And as I mentioned, no windows are located above that proposed area. The next request is a variance request for the downhill building face. And I've highlighted that building face just in blue, just to call it out specifically. The applicant's requesting a variance from the downhill building face. As per the municipal code, the building elevation facing the downslope has a maximum height of 20 feet. In this case, the garage is the lower elevation, but because it's buried in the hillside so much, and the intent of this provision is really to minimize the bulk that's seen from the street, we interpreted the downhill face to be this tower element, which is the closest to the street. The proposed face is 23 feet, 10 inches in height, or three feet, 10 inches more than what's allowed. And as I mentioned, the intent is really to break up mass and bulk, and a major portion of this will not be seen from the street, and staff is supportive of this variance as well. The next variance is for a natural state requirement. As I mentioned before, per the municipal code and due to the steepness of the lot, the site's required to maintain 85% of the lot in natural state. This would mean that no structures, paving, or disturbance could occur for 85% of the lot, or 8,231 square feet. This would leave 1,453 square feet left as buildable area. Again, because this includes paving and disturbed area, this 1,453 square feet would include the driveway, residence, light wells, retaining walls, any disturbed area. The applicant is requesting to have a natural state requirement of 50.1% as opposed to the 85 required. As part of the submittal requirements, the applicant provided a diagram indicating visually what conformance to the code would look like, and that is the diagram on the left. The hatched areas is the amount of area that could be disturbed under the code. As you can see, there's not enough area to construct the driveway, let alone the house itself. In addition, because there's that 18% limit on the slope of the driveway, the driveway itself needs to be longer in order to decrease or increase the grade gradually. So, in effect, the applicant's requesting to disturb 49.9% of the lot. Half of that number, about 26%, would be utilized for the garage and house itself. The rest would be for paving and retaining walls. In terms of variances, as you know, there's several findings that need to be met, all of which are pretty rigorous. So, I outline the findings on the slide, and I'll go through each one. The first one, the applicant really needs to show that there's extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property. Planning staff does believe that all four of the findings can be met, and I'll go through each of them. The property is located on a very steep hillside, and although the lot is larger, most of it is not buildable unless the owners were to undertake significant amounts of grading or request an even greater variance to the natural state requirement than what they're asking for now. Without a variance, only a portion of the driveway would be able to be constructed. The lot coverage of the buildings and structures will remain at 26%, slightly more than half the lot-- excuse me-- slightly more than half the lot coverage allowed for the site. A great portion of the variance, square footage, as I mentioned, will be utilized for the driveway and access to the lot. With regards to the downhill building face, the steepness of the slope again is a unique situation. The building face will be partly shielded by hillside and will also be set back from the front property, reducing visual impacts from the street. And in terms of the footprint of the proposed residence, it's similar to other residences within the neighborhood, as shown on sheet A03. There needs to be a physical hardship with the lot. Anyone who wished to develop this lot would have the same obstacles with regard to natural state. It's also likely that because of the slope, any multiple-story house on the slot would have the same height constraint with regard to downhill face. The physical hardship is due to the slope of the lot, which has not been caused by anyone's actions, but rather is a geographic feature of the site. The design of the residence and the fact that it's set into the hillside is a greater benefit than where the house to be located on top of the hillside or with large retaining walls. Further, no structure could be feasibly constructed and accessed without a variance to the natural state requirement. The third finding requires that granting the application will not be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity. Parking will be improved, as the driveway will allow for parking out of the right-of-way and allow a space for delivery trucks to pull into and making deliveries. The applicant has attempted to build the house into the hillside as much as possible. The alternative to this would be to build a house on top of the hillside, which would be a much greater visual impact. Again, the increase in the amount of the downhill building face will be less visible from the right-of-way. Finally, the variance needs to be consistent with the general purposes and objectives of the title, any specific plans, and of the general plan. Apart from the requests made in this proposal, the residence complies with other requirements of the zoning title and general plan policies. Specifically with regards to general plan policies, policy land use 10.2 requires new development in hillside areas to be designed into the natural features of the hillside, including topography, trees, vegetation, landforms, and drainage channels. And policy LU 10.3 encourages houses within the hillside areas to be oriented towards the natural topography of the site. In terms of the overall landscaping and tree removal permit, as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing to remove eight heritage trees. They're shown on this plan as the X's down near the garage and within the driveway. They include six oak trees, one bay tree, and one buckeye. The city's arborist has inspected the trees and written a report included in your staff report, and supports the removal of all the trees, stating that none of them are in good condition. The trees proposed for removal would meet the findings in the municipal code, as they are diseased, a nuisance, or detract from the property. A conceptual landscaping plan was submitted in conjunction with the proposal, and you can see most of it on the screen. And this plan meets both the landscaping requirements for new homes, as well as the replacement requirements for the trees. Specifically, the applicant is proposing to plant six 24-inch box marine arbutus, one 24-inch box coast live oak, one 24-inch box red oak, two 24-inch box strawberry trees, and five 15-gallon flowering cherry trees. These trees will satisfy the landscaping requirements. However, the planning commission could require additional trees or specify their species if it so chose. The applicant will also be planting several shrubs and ground cover, most of which the plants and trees have a low water designation. The grading and dirt hole certificate is the last approval the applicant is requesting. The applicant's proposing to remove approximately 2,650 cubic yards of earth from the site. This will result in approximately 250 truck trips over about one month. As more than 1,000 cubic yards are proposed, as you know, this requires a certificate for grading and dirt hole from the planning commission. And I did want to clarify in terms of process, if this is approved this evening, the certificate, that will authorize the applicant to apply for a grading permit from Public Works. So, at that time, Public Works will be doing, reviewing the grading plans further, and actually issuing the permit in accordance with the municipal code. So, this certificate will not authorize them to grade. They need to get the permit from Public Works and an engineer as well. The earthwork is required to construct both the driveway access and well as the site itself. A construct-- excuse me-- a condition has been added to the certificate, which notes that the size of the haul truck must be approved before issuance due to the size and width of the street. If a smaller truck is required, based on the width and condition of the road, it is likely the number of trips would increase. Recommendations of a geotechnical study would have to be incorporated into the design and construction documents, and the applicant will be required to follow recommendations within the geotechnical study. The city's consultant also reviewed the applicant's geotechnical report and concurred that it is geologically and geotechnically feasible to construct the residence if the recommendations are followed, and as well as three new conditions that were recommended by our consultant, which have been included within the approval documents. In terms of dirt hole routes, there's two routes proposed, and this is because the destination of the off-haul is not yet determined. One of the routes is along-- or, I'm sorry-- to Highway 280, and this would travel from Coronado to Windsor Drive to Devonshire Boulevard to San Carlos Avenue, which then turns into Alameda, and then to Ralston to 280. The 101 route, which is the alternate route, would be, again, Coronado Avenue to Windsor Drive to Devonshire Boulevard, this time a right on San Carlos Avenue to El Camino, and then to Ralston to Highway 101. The routes have been approved by Public Works, both of them, and of course, the off-haul site will have to be decided and approved by Public Works as well as part of the permit. Conditions have been added to the grading and dirt hole certificate to have the applicant receive approval from the city of Belmont to haul dirt over their streets, and to ensure that dirt removal is done safely and in a controlled manner. In terms of public outreach and comments, a notice was sent to the 300-foot radius, as well as to each residence fronting any local or collector streets along the dirt hole routes. The applicants also conducted their own outreach, sending reduced-sized copies of the project plans, as well as having a neighborhood meeting. This slide outlines the primary concerns of neighbors as staff has heard, and I wanted to point out, too, that staff received two acknowledgment forms with concerns. We received an email today, a copy of which is at the dais, and I understand there's other neighbors here who would like to comment, but in terms of what I'll be talking about is what we received as of the meeting. So, one of the first comments was obstruction of view, specifically heights of the residence and the height of the trees. In terms of height of the residence, it's been designed to be below the ridge of the hill, the uphill neighbor. The trees that were originally proposed at the rear of the lot were moved to the right-side property line, and that was twofold. That was to make sure the view was not obstructed for the uphill neighbor and also address concerns that the neighbor to the right had, so putting more trees in between the neighbors to help mitigate privacy. For construction and parking concerns, a condition was included that the applicant has to provide a construction operation plan, subject to review and approval by the building official. And going along with this, concerns with damage to the roads as part of grading or construction. All grading permits are required to-- the applicant is required to post a bond for any damage that's not repaired, so the city can repair that damage. So, that is already an included condition for this project. In terms of maneuvering from the driveway, the neighbor to the right had concerns with the angle of the proposed driveway of 171 as it comes to meet his driveway. And in terms of that, the driveway cut and apron will be reviewed by Public Works, and they'll ensure that all requirements are being met. In terms of the staff recommendation, we are recommending that the planning commission approve the code compliance certificate for design review, which includes the request for the exception for the garage setback and window trim, a waiver to exceed the overall height limit, variances for the natural state in downhill building face, a tree removal permit, and a grading and dirt hole certificate. And this is the formal motion should you choose to approve the item. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant and his engineer are also here as well. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
Not at this time, no.
Does the applicant wish to make a presentation of any kind?
Hi, my name is Ray Viati. I'm the architect on the project. Andrea pretty much summarized everything I have here, but just to simply kind of synopsize what we came up with in the design process, we started with was basically coming up with access or garage location on the site. If you look at the map, it's by the time you're at the property line on the site plan, you're already eight feet above-- you're already eight feet above the street. So, it's very diff-- it's a steep climb right off the street. That's why we chose to do that-- do the driveway the way we did. So, when we started the project, we looked at access or driveway location, and we came up with two options, and both of these options show up in our written submittal package to you, and that was Exhibit A. The first option has a garage facing the street, and it's placed right on the setback. That actually has more negative impact on the overall project than positives, the main one being that it requires more retaining walls and more excavation. The option that we proposed to go with actually has a lot more going for it. The garage is almost completely screened from the street. It's a longer driveway, driveway which allows for additional off-street parking, and it allows the house to sit more on the hill-- sit on the hill instead of looking like it's carved into the hill. We placed the garage on the east side of the property so we could orient the house a little bit more, the public spaces had more of the view in the northeast direction towards the bay. The overall house design kind of was inspired by the buildings in Santorini that step up and down the hills, so they're undulating. So, we chose to do that, or we worked to do that, to break down the massing of the house, so you don't have any walls that are over two feet in-- or two stories in height together. We also used the circulation in the center of the house to help break up the two wings, the public and the private wing, and give the house more articulation. These two, the garage and stepping up and down the site, actually worked in-- worked hand-in-hand in basically in how much of a request we needed for the natural state on the site and the height request for the waiver on the height request. In terms of the natural state, when you go back to the two driveway options, if we were to leave the driveway facing the-- leaving the driveway door facing the street, we'd still have to do a fair amount of excavation to allow access to the front door, and the garage would be set much farther down, down towards street level in order to comply with the driveway requirements. And when you look at that versus running a long driveway like our proposed option, there's only about 100 cubic yards difference in excavation between the two options and earthwork. So, we chose-- that's why we chose to work with the option that we did. And then, in terms of the house footprint, it's the same thing. If I do a wider, shorter house, I disturb more land. If I do a taller, narrower house, I disturb less land. So, you know, when we looked at the design, the footprint, we found that what we came up with is kind of a good compromise for what we're looking at for height issues and the disturbance of the natural state. We did hold a neighborhood meeting right after we submitted into the city as required. We had a few neighbors come to that meeting. They discussed their concerns. One was a neighbor to the south, the uphill neighbor. They concerned, they requested about views, and we told them, "We're definitely-- we're far below the ridge height, so we would not be impacting any of their views." And the other neighbor to the west was-- his concern was his privacy in the driveway, and we took the trees that were posed-- as Andrea said, the trees that were proposed-- And we took the trees that were posed, as Andrea said, the trees that were proposed on the uphill side, moved them down and added additional trees to provide screening and privacy to the, to the neighbor to the west. And that's kind of it. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant architect at this time?
Just a quick one. And again, I think I might know the answer, but I'm, I'm always curious every time one of these hillside houses come in front of us. Why not just request a variance to the driveway grade so that you can have it a little bit steeper? Was that because you didn't want to increase the height of the house, or?
Don't want to create, increase the height of the house, and the transition from the street's going to be even worse.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for the architect at this time?
Sorry, one more question.
Yes.
Can you walk me through the retaining walls on the side? Are they, and this might be better for your landscape architect, but are they going to have plants that flow over to cover them?
Yes, they are going to have, they are going to have plants, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. So I'm going to begin the, the public comment period. Each member of the public is going to have three minutes to speak. We currently have seven speakers. Is there anyone who wishes to speak who hasn't filled out a speaker slip yet? If you haven't, it would be, it would be nice if you filled one out. They're located, I believe, over there, whatever direction that is, I guess, be north-east-ish. If you need more than three minutes, just ask. I just ask that you be respectful of everybody's time and, and give me a reasonable estimate about how much more time you may need. You know, the other, the other issue I want to, you know, raise is, I'm not suggesting, I'm just one vote. I don't know how I'm going to vote yet, but, you know, generally speaking, when applications like this come to us, and, you know, the tendency with, with staff recommending approval is often to approve the project. So if you, if you have some comments about how you can make the project better, I would suggest that you, you make those comments because those are very, very productive. If your view is that there's no project that you would be supportive of, that's fine. You can certainly make that point, but I suggest that if you do, even if that is your general view, if you have some suggestions about how to make the project better, those are always very productive. So with that, the first speaker slip I have is for, man, Natalia?
Natalia.
Natalia, thank you. So if you could come up to the, to the dais if you, if you don't mind, because we're recording it, and so if you don't speak into the microphone, it can't, it can't pick it up. I don't, I don't mean to make you feel uncomfortable.
My question was addressed, it's about height of trees, and I am at 151.
And just, and I won't use this, I won't take your time away. It's also helpful to know where you are relative to the project, so if you're like immediately to?
151.
Okay.
So if you face 171, I'm on the left.
Okay. And so you were concerned about the height of the trees?
Height of trees addressed, or?
So your concern is that whether the height of the trees would be sufficient to, to provide privacy to you?
It's, no, actually, we don't want to have very high trees because we have windows and we have a light from this side, from the side of 171.
Okay.
So if it's a big trees, our rooms will be dark. So it's a medium size or something like that.
Okay. So you're, you're basically requesting that any trees that are placed on the, on the west side of the property are not, are not very tall?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. And one second, my pen disappeared.
Another concern about dust when dirt will be removed. We have wind going our side, and we are really very, very close, so we would like to request that the dust control will be put in place.
Dust control?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You guys are the new house next to you, right?
Yes, yes, just next, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next is Mr. Peters.
Hi, good evening. Sorry.
Hey, it's not your fault. Just do the best you can.
I'm in 152 Coronado, so right downhill from the house. We've had the pleasure over the last year and a half to enjoy the construction of the house right in front of you, 151 Coronado. We're very happy that it's pretty much finished. We would love to have it completely finished, but we're very happy about that. I would say there's some lessons learned from that construction, and so let's start with that. And I think we were, last time when the permit was approved for 151, there was lots of concerns about construction hours, and as you know, it's a very narrow street, the contractors being there, it's not just dirt hole dirt trucks, but also access for emergency equipment in, in case of emergency, et cetera. So in the permit for 151, there was restricted hours of construction that were set for during construction was from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, only Monday through Friday, no construction Saturday and Sunday. And I can tell you, that was very much appreciated by the neighborhood because this is a residential neighborhood. We all live very close together, no construction during the weekends. Thank you very much. Same thing, early morning before 8:00 AM. Please don't have these construction crews start showing up. We're all trying to get our kids to school before 8:00 AM. It's very narrow streets. We're all trying to get the hell out of there between 7:45 and 8:15, trust me, and we're all in a hurry. And so not having the whole construction crews lining up, ready to, and, and starting to unpack, because that's the time they start unpacking and trucks are all over, it's not good. So I would like to request that the same restrictions are in place for this permit, that construction is not allowed or only allowed between 8:00 and 6:00, only during the week. I would request, the further change that was requested and that was allowed with 151 is for grading. Don't let these trucks show up, even at 8:00 AM, yeah? Make that the same thing as was for the previous permit, which was 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, yeah? These trucks, you really do not want cars, you know, you know how narrow it is, and you don't want to have any accidents happening there. And again, so 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM for grading, and only during the week. By the way, one month of excavation, it's not going to happen, yeah? You can talk about how longer, how much longer it take, I actually looked at it day by day, yeah? Let's give or take, going to be four months, yeah? Just, just be, whoever is the applicant, it's four months, it's going to cost you about three, four times as much as you're expecting, yeah? Go talk to these folks. Trust me, it's, it's hard, what's, what's in there? You're going to say that you, you got it quoted based on just the dirt? It's not dirt, it's rock, and it's, it's hard rock. Again, ask these guys, they know, know very well. So anyway, those are two changes I would like to request that I think would improve for the neighborhood, the livability of the, of the, during the construction tremendously, okay? The only other, by the way, I'm, I'm very supportive of the design of the house. I like the, the modern construction, so I'm very much, very supportive of that. The only other request that I have is around the, the height restriction. As we all know, I'm live, I live downhill, yeah? As we all know, these, if you're on a steep lot and you're going higher and higher, it takes the solar, it takes the sun away from the downhill lots. They're actually locating their house right on my south side. For me, I'm, where their house is located is straight where the sun is for me. I actually have lots of windows on my front side. I have a front yard that we designed and, and have and enjoy all the time, allowing the height restriction exactly these extra peaks, that's exactly sunlight that will be taken away straight from my front yard. I would very much not appreciate that. I'm okay to allowing what they're allowed to do, yeah? But allowing a variance on this, it has, going to have a very negative impact on the value of my home and the desirability and enjoyability of my home, and so I would very much appreciate if the commission would reject that height restriction, a variance on that height restriction.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is Ms. Holtein. Cindy? Hi.
I live at 172 Coronado Avenue in San Carlos. We moved there in 1999. We have witness other projects in the neighborhood, and some pretty big construction projects like Peter had mentioned, and...
Can you help me, orient me where you are relative to the project site?
Oh, the house next door, where the driveway faces and where the driveway is going to end up, is basically where my car will back up.
Okay.
So basically, the two houses at 172 and, I don't know what the other address is, next door to me to the west.
116.
Her house. Yeah.
Which one are you?
I have no idea. Oh, wait a minute.
You mean, you don't recognize your house from the roof?
Uh, I, I think I'm on that corner right there.
Where the C is.
Got it. So, I'm sorry, it took me a minute to get oriented, but basically, the, the house that I live in and that she lives in, and then his house across the street, they, all the driveways are going to be coming out within like a distance that's not even as wide as the city council bench right here, and it's going to cause an accident, and it's also on a blind corner. So it's just a really awful design of that driveway. In my opinion, it needs to be on the west side of the property, where there are, by the way, no driveways. Makes perfect sense. In addition to that, I also question the viability of any heritage removals, and I question this diseased report and all of this. I'm pretty concerned about the neighborhood maintaining its peaceful hillside living qualities. It's, it's known as being a rural neighborhood filled with, you know, oak trees, and this concept of, you know, manufactured non-native plants like cherry trees just doesn't fit into the neighborhood. So I would like to see oak trees and heritage trees stay whenever possible. I also am not a fan of height requirements, especially because I live downhill, and it seems like a monstering towering effect when you build these huge houses up. So the variances are there, or the, the rules and regs are there for, I believe, for reasons, and I think they should be honored. And I also would like to see more natural state created. If there's rules, again, I think they should be honored and followed, and I don't think that you need to overbuild in the neighborhood. And I am also very, very concerned, not only about the quality of life during the construction project, but also the horrendous state of the roadway. I want to make sure that the City of San Carlos is aware that there are six huge construction projects going on right now. There are three at some state of either beginning or ending on the, on the, on the Coronado Avenue street. There's one on the corner of Roslin in Coronado. There's one on the corner of Roslin in Fay, and there's one on Fay, which basically means that any place I walk, I can't walk at night because I will fall down because there are cracks in the road. Any place I drive, I have to be careful because there are potholes and divots and stray rocks, and it's just an awful street to drive or walk on now, which it used to not be. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, through, through the chair, I'm sorry. And Ms. Holtein, you provided us one copy of your written statement.
Actually, that's my husband.
Oh, your husband. Okay, and I just wanted to note for the record that we only received one copy, but I will pass this down.
He has one, I think.
Pass. Oh, I'm sorry. So if you'd like to give those, we can give them to the commission as well. I, I suppose that was your intent in providing it to us? You would like us to?
You can, you can write it.
Sure. All right, unless you were going to speak towards this. I'm sorry if I jumped ahead, I just saw.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then I will just, we'll be patient until you want to speak. Thank you.
For the record, I'd note that we all received a copy of an email written by Roy Cardozo dated Monday, June 1st, 2015. It was an email written by Mr. Cardozo to Andrea, and we've all received a copy and had an opportunity to review it, and it's part of the record. So the next speaker, Scott Giambastiani.
Got it.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. So ironically, you mentioned Ben Fuller. Ben used to be in my neighborhood when I lived on Old County Road, right at Riverton. We battled with the legacy partner of development that would obstruct our view. They got it down from four stories to three. We since moved, and now we are right on Elston Court overlooking the new development. Super happy to the fact that there will be a home for someone to live in. At the end of the day, we have two very simple requests that were made initially when we met with the architects. And the first request is, at the time, the proposed height was still a hard one to stomach, but we said if that is the height that is going to be proposed and nothing will go above that, we can live with that. To hear that there's a height variance being requested, huge, huge pain for us for a variety of reasons. One, the house, if you're looking at it, has about 180-degree view of the canyons as well as the bay, and anything that you're looking out from the first level inside the house, on the patio, or even on the deck, you'll obviously see the roof. And so anything higher than proposed, we obviously have a huge problem with and do not, do not appreciate that request, and are obviously against that. The second quest, it could just be a question, is we're not really sure with the changes being proposed, where the natural trees would be replanted, and because we've got panoramic views and windows on the two-story house that we own, basically all around the perimeter overlooking the bay as well as the canyons, is we're not sure, A, what size, what height, and what placement the trees may have been moved from the original discussion. The original placement of the trees were going to be blocking our bedroom window, and so we requested that be removed. So at the end of the day, just want to have better clarity as to where the trees will be planted. The big thing, obviously, with the value of the house that we have now, we paid for the view, and so the roof height is the main issue that we have a concern with. If there are proposals that can build the house less than three stories, great. If it can stay at three stories and not go higher or go wider, it's already at 3,900 square feet, which is a true monster. I can sympathize with the rest of the neighbors that it's obviously going to be blocking sun from below. From our standpoint, it's really blocking view, aesthetics, value of the home. So those are the major two concerns. The request that we have, and this was put in the initial request with the designers, the architects, is we would really like to be able to see, because even though we're being told what the height of the roof would be, being able to see a schematic as to looking out of our house, how this is going to affect us, since we just moved in nine months ago, would obviously put a little bit of mind at ease, but if we can stay with the original restriction of height and ensure that the plants aren't blocking any of our, any of our view, those would be the first two absolute must-haves. Completely agree with one of the other neighbors around dust control, as we do have an open pool and spa, as well as our neighbor two doors down. Anything we can do to mitigate any sort of dust control and/or take care of any cleanup would be appreciated. And then the largest concern, just because we are living on the bedrock, is to ensure that any work that would be done digging into the foundation for the 2,600 cubic feet that they're pulling out, is to ensure that there's no damage done to our structure. We have had the retaining wall around the pool replaced prior to our moving in and taking possession of the home. Very, very concerned just because of the placement of the pool that we have before we moved in, that any digging into the foundation for anywhere from one to four months could have detrimental effect to the foundation. So we'd like to have insurances that anything that needs to be tested before or after would be done so that, so you don't have any damage that we're not unaware of with the foundational drilling and such. Ideally, if we can get down the road after this is done, it would be nice to have an idea of where they propose additional trees, fencing, and aesthetics, but less concerned about that, more want to get to the additional and the height. So that's it. Thank you.
So I'm just trying to, I totally get the issue with the downhill folks and the height... height, but as I'm understanding the presentation, even with the three, we're talking about 3.5 feet, but even with the 3.5 feet, it's below the ridge line. So, I don't understand how that three, you believe that 3.5 feet affects you.
It's a great question. So, if we're looking at the development that's just been built to the right of us, that is, the owners moved in, if we're sitting on the deck looking over, obviously, you would expect to see a house. But if you are further back on our deck, which you can see up in the plan here, and you're basically at the pool, or even behind the pool closer to the kitchen, you can still see the new development, which is, from what I hear, a lower development than what's being proposed. So, the question, the concern we have is any additional height based on what was promised is, in our mind, unacceptable, because wherever we are, outside the house, just outside the patio door, we're already seeing that neighborhood house off to the corner. And because of this property that we live on, basically covers the circumference, almost 180-degree view of the canyons, wherever you are outside, you're already seeing the current house roof, and anywhere closer with a newer height on this new house, you're going to see even more of it. So, we're just trying to protect our assets as much as possible, because you really do pay for this view, ensuring that you don't see more roofs based off of where you are on the patio. And again, completely understand, if you're standing on the edge of the balcony, you expect to see that home there because that's their right, but when you're stepping further back behind the pool, you can still see that roof line on the current house.
I'm sorry, on the current house at 151?
I don't know the address. It's that one that just got built, yeah.
This one. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Well, Tim Lee is much easier than the last name to pronounce. I think I got that one right. Tim Lee.
I thought he was extra hundreds.
Okay.
So, I live at the same house that Cindy does. Don't need to go through that again. So, I gave you a couple of handouts. One of them shows pretty pictures. The other one is kind of a little mini report, and as Cindy said, we've lived here for 15 years. I'm also a civil engineer. I've been a civil engineer for 31 years, and kind of surprised about the heritage trees aspect. Had a meeting last week with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife where we were removing 12 trees as part of a freeway project, and they wanted three times the disturbed area mitigated. So, replacing the seven trees with a few landscape trees, and I think there's one oak in there, is kind of a, it's not really a good trade-off. Also, Mike, our neighbor on the other side of the street at 181, sort of eyes on those oaks as a good screen between his property and where this new residence would be, and he's going to have all that taken out, so he's going to lose that privacy. So, these are native oaks. These are heritage trees. You know, you don't just take them out and put in a bunch of landscape trees and, mind you, you've, I guess it's C cor exempt, so I guess you can do what you like, but very surprising. My biggest concern, I mean, there's been some really good points here, but, you know, this is a major construction operation. A gentleman mentioned about the grading, which is one of the permits. One of the photos shows the 181 property, which is all rock excavation. The bore holes on this site showed the rock is two to five feet below the surface. Some of the cuts are 30 feet deep, so it's not really a dirt hole certificate, it's more a rock hole certificate. And rock weighs a lot more than dirt, so it's not 250 loads, it's probably twice that. So, you're talking about 500 trucks, not 250. As Cindy mentioned, you know, we've, we've had a parade of these projects over the past few years, and this is a winding, two-lane road that's no shoulders. It wasn't designed for 10-ton trucks, and it's being pounded. It's falling apart. Look at the photos there. You know, you did a survey, or sorry, an analysis of all the streets in the city. This street was given two years serviceable life back in 2013, just sort of general use. And, you know, now it's completely failed, so you're not talking about an overlay, it's a reconstruct in some areas. So, all this construction is costing the city a lot of money to repair these roads at some point. In the meantime, we're having to kind of drive through it all, and it doesn't look good for people who are trying to sell their homes to have a road that's potholed and cracked and falling apart. So, you know, when you do these grading permits, you need to really think of the cumulative impacts, which is a sequer term, not, not just this one project on its own, because they, they have a cumulative impact. When you dig into the hillside, it has a cumulative impact. There's a big crater being dug down below our house by a property on Fay Avenue. The bore holes at this property went down 12 feet, I think, but they're digging 30 feet. Who knows what's down there? So, there's a lot of unknowns. Who knows what's going to happen? It's certainly not going to be a month, four months maybe. It could be much longer, but it's going to be a lot of rock drilling, and we're going to be facing it. It's a big, a lot to ask us to be good neighbors for. So, I would ask you to look at that grading permit, and it is a one-way system, but there is no room for the trucks to turn around as well. That needs to be taken into consideration. What the trucks usually do is they, they take a different route because they can't turn around. The road is too narrow. When they get there, you know, they've got to maneuver in and out. So, the whole route looks fine on a Google map, but when you actually get to the destination, you know, they've got to maneuver. So, a 10-ton truck on Coronado is a challenge for a driver. So, I don't think the, the route is, is going to work, and typically, the drivers use different routes. So, I appreciate your time, and I ask your public works folks to take a closer look at this, and it's a growing problem in our neighborhood, and we ask you to look into it. Thank you.
And so, we did receive the packet from Mr. Lee. And, I mean, just for the folks who didn't get a copy, it, consistent with most of his comments, the majority of the, of the packet deals with the, the road and the dirt hauling and the impacts on the road. There's a document that supports his comment regarding the remaining life of the road, and then there's some pictures of the, of the trees and the, and the newly-built home that's adjacent. So, and that's part of the record as well, and I've reviewed it. So, the next speaker is Ms. Woodring.
I live on 162 Coronado Avenue. It's right across the street, so we're going to be greatly impacted. We just moved in, my husband, my children, and I just moved in three months ago. If we would have known this before that, we would not have probably moved in. By the time we found out, we were almost closing escrow, and we actually didn't make it to the meeting. I did speak to Mr. Viori after the fact, after his meeting, and I did tell him my concerns, and one of them was the potential of there being damage to our RACE Foundation. So, I really would like to recommend that all the committee members go ahead and come and visit our area. I think, as another gentleman said, it's very hard to really to get a real hold of what this area looks like with this map.
I can actually say, we've, we've all been there before. Oh, yeah. Multiple times. This isn't our first rodeo.
This is my first rodeo here now. I did fall, I do want to add the comment about the road's condition. The other day, I was actually walking my two dogs, and I did fall down, and I did almost break my, my ankle. My two neighbors had to come and pick me up on the road because I started screaming. I was, I was in such excruciating pain, but it had to do with the leveling. The road is not level and is not in good condition. So, what I would like to ask, and these are the main concerns, even, you know, I've already said some of them, but one of them is that any work done to develop 171 Coronado Avenue is done in a manner that does not negatively impact our slope, because if you see, our slope is also probably like a 62% slope like the one that, the lot that is being recommended to be built on. We have the same type of difficulty in our, in our slope. Our foundation is a RACE foundation, and that foundation was negatively, negatively impacted back in 2007. There was a fire hydrant on the property in question right now that went ahead and for some reason, it started discharging hundreds of gallons of water, and it was never, it was not turned off for many hours. So, two of the peers of our foundation failed due to the water discharge. And so, after that, the owner had to go ahead and do a very big, like a $200,000 job in getting the foundation re-enforced. So, that's one big concern of mine, that an emergency of that sort may happen, and we may not have a way to contact someone about it. Now, I don't know what happened in 2007 because I was not there at that time, but for some reason, it was allowed to happen. So, I'm going to ask that the architect and the owners go ahead and leave us some phone numbers for us to be able to reach for any kind of emergency that may happen on the property when nobody's on site. Also, I'm, we're asking that the, the workers are trained and told what it's private property. I have had problems with people turning around in our property and making it a driveway to turn around, because as you go up the hill, the hill keeps going and going, and people, you know, don't want to continue going up, so they use our property as a way to turn around, and our driveway is not very strong. I don't think it really can be holding big trucks or anything of that sort, and it is private property. The other thing I'm going to ask is also, and I know I spoke to Mr. Viori about it, that construction hours would be honored, and that would be, as Mr. Peters said, from 8 to 5 p.m. Monday through Friday. And also, I like the idea that Mr. Peters went ahead and spoke regarding the 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock grading for the grading trucks. I had not thought about that, of course, but Mr. Peters has had experience with this before, and I really like that idea of controlling the, the time to be in a more narrow window of time during the day. And as Mr. Peters said, we have children that were getting in and out of there. At 8 o'clock in the morning, people are just rushing down and up and down this, this street, and at this point, even us backing out right now as it is without this driveway, driveway setback that is being proposed is a problem. We back out, and at the same time, we have other neighbors backing out, and then there are also problems with people speeding up the hillside, and we have to be very careful not to get hit. I request also that we be formally introduced to the foreman, who's going to be taking care of this site, so that we are able to have some kind of rapport with him or her. In addition, I also question the condition of the heritage trees. To me, that doesn't sound very accurate. Of course, I'm not an arborist, but I really do not know why they're saying that these trees are not good and that they have to be taken out completely. The other issue is, as Mr. Peters said, the height requirement is, is an issue to us in the front too, because of the fact that we also would have light, sunlight blocked to us as it is right now. Dust control is another issue, because we're going to be right in front. And that's it. That's all I have right now. I just want to make sure, you know, I know that we're supposed to be limited to as far as whatever we bring up here in this meeting, but not everything can be foreseen. So, I'm sure there'll be other issues that may be foreseen at some point, and I just want to just state that. Thank you.
Now, you can hear from me because I'm not a happy person. My house is 181. It is next door to this, and you said that you've all been out there a number of times. Have you seen these live oaks over my retaining walls and up, up my house?
I can't speak specifically whether I've seen live oaks over your house. I've been out to the neighborhood.
Yeah. Well, that's what's one of the big important, I had, what do you have the rest of the pictures?
Mr. Han, I'm sorry. Can you just tell me which, which one you are?
Yeah, big lie up to.
This one here?
The one with the long driveway.
Right. Got it.
And this is the lot line. These are all the live oaks. This hangs over, over my driveway.
Got it.
I was just going to bring up a picture, actually.
Yeah, because there are no pictures in any of the reports of what these trees on my property look like. That's completely not shown anyplace. So, that's why I brought the pictures. Anyway, so when I got the first letter that they were going to build on this property, I looked at it, and I couldn't believe it. They're going to tear out all the live oaks that give my home the privacy. Most of them, quite frankly, I don't care what anybody says, are on my property or touching my property. And the other thing was the driveway. They've, you know, we talked about the, there's my corner. Their driveway is going to come out just on the other side of the fire hydrant there. I back down the driveway like this, and there's no way I can look over this retaining wall and see if somebody is backing down the other driveway. I mean, it's an impossibility. That's the biggest safety factor I've ever seen in a construction site. So, they back down that way, I back down that way. Now, I could stop, get out of the car every time I want to leave my house and go look and, and see, but there's no way I can prevent from running into somebody, and neither can NOLA cross the street. So, and the other thing was the height of the house, looking down into my back patio, which is the only place I have, because you can't have a yard up here. But I have a beautiful back patio that runs length of my house, and my days are over there if this gets built in the window. So, I went to the meeting on January 25th, 27th, and I spoke to the architect, and we had, I went through these three issues with him, and I don't know, got a two-sentence response in the report, which I'd like to read and then tell you what our conversation was. "My con attended the meeting presenting concerns of the privacy along the shared property line and vehicle maneuvering in the public right of way." This is what I got out as a response to my meeting. "In response to the privacy concern, we located the coast live oak, as mentioned above, to increase, relocated the coast live oak." I don't know how you relocate the size of that tree that covers half my yard down there and my driveway, "to increase privacy between the two properties." "The vehicle maneuvering concern had to do with those close proximity of both driveways, which you can see there very evidently, which are separated by a fire hydrant and landscaping." Now, my private property goes beyond that fire hydrant. Now, my property goes beyond that fire hydrant, at least to the plans that I have. "We had no immediate solution other than caution while entering the public right-of-way." I'm sorry, that's not an answer. So, I went to the meeting, talked to him. I said, "I'm really upset about losing the privacy of my property and the beauty of my property and the value of my property by having all these live oaks all the way up, you know, on that side of my property just torn out." And you're not going to replace those with cherry trees or whatever else. All I'm going to have is a blank wall. The privacy looking from my home, from my driveway down, I will see, you know, everything. And where it's, now, I just can't believe they're going to tear out all these trees. And there's no pictures of my driveway. There's nothing in this report. It's just left a mess. So, we talked about it, and I went through the main issues. And what he had said to me...
Just for the record, I do think there is actually a picture of your house and driveway in the packet.
I have not seen it.
You indicated it wasn't in the packet. It is in the packet. It's okay. I mean, it's right here, right?
Yeah, I've not seen that.
Okay, I just wanted you to know that it is in the packet.
Okay, can you see the trees over my driveway?
You can see the edge of the trees over the driveway.
Yeah, so it's taken further up, so you can't see that. Anyway, so I talked to the architect, and, you know, he was very nice about it, and I went, I really believed the guy, and he is a nice man. And he said that what he would do, he was talk to the owner and see if they could put the garage at the other end of the property, which would then not have this driveway, which is a big safety factor, you know, cutting right in front of my driveway. There's just no way one can come this way without crossing. And I saw, I felt really pretty good about that because that made sense. It, you know, would work, and they would remove a window or two that wouldn't look right down onto my patio, and that made me happy. And the trees, I can't remember what we did on the trees, but anyway, that's my big issue is I want the trees left alone that are on the property line on my property. I don't want them taken out. I don't want the beauty of my home destroyed in any way for the building of this property. And I certainly don't want a safety factor backing out of my own driveway to get onto Coronado. I just, that would be ridiculous.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm just not a happy person. Here's the pictures I couldn't find. I had them under my file. I'm an idiot.
I disagree, but...
You what?
I disagree.
All right, well, thank you.
But it looks like these are the same pictures you gave me before, but just more copies.
Yeah, multiple copies.
This is quite all right. So, Mr. Druck? Good evening, sir.
Yes, I just wanted to mention for consideration going forward. I live at 306 Windsor Drive. I don't live near the construction property, but I live on the route.
Okay.
Or the dirt in the hauling. And this is a particular location with a confluence of Torino Avenue coming down and Windsor coming down and Windsor Way crossing over, and there's a very sharp turn right there. And it really is representative, as you go up onto the construction site, a very, very narrow passageway. And over the years, recent years, there's been a lot of construction going on, and there's been a lot of experience of trucks bottoming out, trying to make that turn. We have grooves in the road right there at the turn that haven't been repaired yet. Oftentimes, they bring heavy lift equipment up there on flatbeds, and they can't get up the hill, so they have to bring another truck in and take the construction equipment off the flatbed. It's a real tough corner. So, I just wanted, when I read the description, and it talked about the, well, fundamentally, and you've acknowledged it, there's a lot of ambiguity around the dirt hauling right now. We don't know where the destination is, so you don't know the cycle time of the trucks. The other thing is, they say 250, and one gentleman mentioned it might be as many as 500, but that's just the load. You still have the empty coming out, so it could be 500 to 1,000 loads coming across this path. And so, I would just like some consideration. Oh, and the other thing is, there's ambiguity around the size of the truck. So, I mean, I'm not, I can't express what ton truck might be appropriate, but if you divide through the recommended cubic feet with the number of truck loads that they estimate, it's only about 10 cubic feet per load on average. So, that could be a relatively small truck. I don't know. But there's reference also in the permit that says, "Well, we'll determine what size truck it is when we," and it may be smaller, "given consideration of the route." But there's nothing ambiguous about the route at the moment. I don't understand why they can't define the size of the truck. They know where it's going. Everyone can see the narrowness of that route. Everyone can see how high the trees are. Everyone can see what turns have to be negotiated. So, there's a certain truck that's going to fit through that route. But it's representative...
And are you advocating for a smaller truck? Is that what you're...
I'm advocating for a smaller truck. I'm definitely advocating and support a narrow haulage window that would start, you know, 10:00 and end at 4:00. And also advocate that they not pre-position the trucks, that nothing moves over that route until 10:00. But, and I appreciate the fact that any recommendation to increase the number of trucks and reduce the size of trucks is going to increase the cost of the project. But I think the neighborhood has to be taken into consideration, and the quality of the roads and the noise pollution. Sometimes, you know, we've had trucks that sit and idle because they stall out or they get trapped in that corner, and they, you know, and they're just sitting there running gas. So, there's, I just want to raise the point, there's a lot of ambiguity around this issue. I think it is an environmental issue. I think it's a neighborhood issue, a road issue. I think it's a congestion issue as to what size trucks run up and down that route. And you can run the numbers, and if it really was a month, you can determine how many trucks would have to move per day, depending on how many work hours there were. But that really is, can't be determined because we don't know the cycle time from the point of pickup to discharge of the dirt. That truck has to come back. Oh, I have no idea how many trucks a contractor would have to employ to maintain a month's schedule with a certain hour timeframe. But I would just like some considerations as we go forward, that we get more detail about constraining the...
So, sir, I mean, in an ideal world, we're going to act today. I mean, we don't have to act today. I mean, we could certainly ask for more time, but we wouldn't be likely to do that with disrespect to the dirt haul schedule. So, I mean, if there's something in particular, I've got that you probably want the smallest trucks feasible, and that's something that we can talk about. They've indicated the routes that they're going to take. Is there something in particular that you're asking for that we could do today?
Well, two things. Two things. I would like the smallest truck possible.
Got it.
And I would like a very narrow window of transport.
Yeah, maybe narrower.
And I would like, I support the fact that there would only be Monday through Friday, no weekend work.
Got it. Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I just have him point out real quick where he is?
Yeah.
Would you mind just terribly for my...
I saw this on your website, but I couldn't read it. It's...
Approximate.
So, as they're talking, I have, I've gone through all of the speaker slips. Was there anyone who was here that didn't, hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak that hasn't filled out a speaker slip? If you could please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone? Okay. So, we're just going to finish up this housing location.
Mr. Stone, if you have a comment?
Briefly.
It's in agreement.
If you can come up to the microphone, please.
I'm not sure if anyone mentioned this. If I failed to, but I'd like to make sure that it's clearly understood that right in front of the home at 172 Coronado, as well as the home that's adjacent to the lot being proposed for building, is a blind corner. So, all those conversations about street safety and about driveway positioning are because that's a blind corner. We have lots of FedEx trucks coming up and down those streets and delivery trucks, and they all have to honk before they go around the corner. And so, if that driveway backs out right onto that blind corner, it's a really, really, really big deal. And that's all I wanted to do is just validate and underline, you know, the premise behind this positioning is that you're suggesting people blackout, back out onto a blind corner when you're coming from the west to the east. Thank you.
So, the architect wants to come on up. Come on up. I think we probably have some questions for you anyway, so you can certainly take your opportunity to address any of the comments that were made. I know I have some questions for you.
Why don't we address your questions, and maybe they might clarify that instead of doing two dozen?
So, first, let's, there were a couple of folks that talked about moving the driveway from one side to the other. Why is that a terrible idea?
The owner wants a west-facing front door. He was very, very specific on that.
Is there any...
Well, that's part of it. Hold on, that's...
Wait, wait, wait. Before you continue, these things can, everyone is very invested, and I get that. Everyone, I don't live here. I have a, I live in San Carlos in a location that I could complain about too. Everyone has issues with their location. I just want to make sure that we're all respectful of each other, that we only speak at the microphone, and if folks need, you know, want to respond, they'll be given an opportunity to respond. So, yes, sir.
The reason we came up with the garage location that we did is because if I face it towards the street, I'd be carving into the hill, and the whole house would be carved into the hill in order to keep the height down. That's the first reason. We looked, the other reason of putting the garage on the other, on your side, and it would have shifted the living space over there, would have required us, he would have, if we, if we shifted the garage to your side and tried to keep...
It'd also be helpful, don't address particular people and their issues. Just talk about what you're doing.
If we shifted the garage to the west side, we would have ended up having to do more grading on the east side to come up with some outdoor area. I mean, basically, what ends up happening is because of the garage location, we actually are using the roof of the garage as outdoor, as an outdoor deck. If you look at that, we have no, we're doing no, we're doing no grading outside of the footprint of the house mostly, unless it's for access. So, that's kind of why we kept the garage in that area, in that direction there.
I'm sorry, can you explain why, that if you just switched the orientation, you couldn't just put a rooftop deck on that garage?
Because that's the bedroom wing on the west side.
I see.
So, I'm sorry, so it would block the view of the bedroom? Is that what...
No, if I, if I were to move the garage to the west side and leave the house plan the way it is, because the better views are based on this orientation here. I have better views from the public spaces based on this design.
Uh-huh.
So, if I were to literally take and move the garage to the east side, to the west side and leave the rest of the house the way it is, I would end up having to do more, more disturb, well, actually, I can't. I wouldn't even have a play area because my driveway's going across that way. We explored it, and it's been so long since we explored it, I can't remember exactly why. It was partly owner-driven as well as driveway-driven. This solution being the better solution.
Can you give us a sense of how much more grading you would need to do in order to move the driveway over to the other side?
What happens is, is if I move the driveway over to the other side, I have no patio area because I'm going to still have that type of driveway that radiuses down towards the street.
If you might, if I say a couple things?
He could, this is, this is a civil engineer on the property for the project.
Sorry, my name is Travis. I'm with Precision Engineering. And basically, when we restore, when we explored the idea of putting it on the other side, because of its about 62% slope, in order to keep the maximum driveway slope, it requires just massive retaining walls within even the public right-of-way that weren't favorable. So, I know, you know, typically, that we try to keep even a four-and-a-half-foot setback within the front, four-and-a-half-foot wall height within the front yard setback, and we'd be looking at literally, you know, 15, 18-foot retaining walls to be able to keep the driveway at elevation that was allowed the 18% maximum slope.
I'm sorry, is the hill significantly more sloped on the west side? Am I not seeing that visually?
No, no, no. But just by increasing the driveway length, it allows us to play a lot more with that driveway, whereas if we kept it at the same, you know, five-foot setback, which is my understanding, we'd be allowed to do at the 18% max. I have to bring that driveway up clear, clear down to make it 18%.
Right, now, that...
I'm basically going from a 62% down to, down to an 18%.
But it seems like if the slope is the same, and you simply switch the driveway to the other side, you could just do the same thing in the other direction.
You mean, as far as starting the driveway on this side?
Correct.
And keeping the same driveway length?
It seems more of a design issue than an engineering issue. Am I right?
You end up, in order to do that, you end up redoing the circulation through the entire house.
Sure. And I see that.
Another reason why we kept it to the, to the part of its view, the main part of its view, to having access based on the layout of the house.
While you pause on that for a second, can I ask maybe staff, did Public Works review the driveway for safety, given that it seems to back out on five other driveways?
They did review the proposal. I'm not sure if in the initial review that they reviewed that specifically. I did follow up with them after the concerns came up, and they will review the cut, the apron, as well as the maneuvering as part of their review. And when they get the formal, you know, assuming this is approved, when they get the formal grading plans, that's also when they'll, to answer another question, decide on truck size once they have the more specific details. At that point, they'll be making a lot more decisions as part of the permit.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then through the chair, if I may just direct my question to the architect. If you'd like us to pull up any images, just let me know if they, I mean, there's a couple renderings I can just scroll through if it helps.
So, are you ready to talk more about this, or you need more time?
I need more time. I'm still...
I actually have a question for Lisa.
I do, but I...
We can ask more questions of staff while you take a second.
Lisa, this is going back a year. I remember hearing something on RDRC. Was that for 151 or was this for 171, or was there, was there an actual 161? I know that's where I met Mr. Peters. What, do you remember what, I don't remember the address for that. Was that for 151? This was like a year and a half ago. A building permit in design.
It was a 151. And so, the owner's a 151, and they complied with the...
Yeah, yeah, I remember that we changed things on the fly.
And then the overall approval, there's a couple lines added with the construction hours.
Okay.
And I guess, I mean, they complied with that, and thank you.
Okay. I remember that, yeah. I was just trying to remember if it was 151.
Excuse me, sorry. Through the chair, I believe you're referring to 147, which is on the left of 151. So, just...
Okay, so there is a slimmer kind of in-between all this stuff.
Yeah, so, just sort of a brief history. 147, which is a vacant lot now, 151 and 171 were originally a PD, Plan Development. In 2001, by that time, only 151 had been approved for construction, and so it complied with the specific zoning criteria in the PD. When the zoning code changed and these became RS6, both 147 and 171 had to comply with the new requirement. So, 151 had its own specific zoning just for that lot that the other two do not.
And there was, there was a hearing for 147, RDRC. Okay. And there is an approved plan for that.
There is an approved permit ready to issue, but it has not been issued yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, 147, 151, 171.
So, I feel like I'm losing it here.
I thought I was losing it. That's why I was trying to remember what that address was.
Do you have a response now?
I have your response. I'm sorry, it took so long. The reason why we kept it on the west side is if I put it, or kept it on the east side, if I put the garage on the west side, it's going to stand out. It's going to be much more daylighted towards the street, so I'm going to have a much more larger mass looming over the street. That's why I ended up leaving it on the west side. So, that way there, I don't have a large mass hovering right up against the street like what's, that's right up against the street.
And so, why does it... And so why does it hover more on the west side than the east side?
On the west side, I'm more exposed.
Why?
Because I'm higher, I'm more at grade there, whereas I'm, there's a 10-foot differential there. On the, on the side that it's designed, um, majority of the garage is below grade.
Okay.
And on the west side, more of a...
But then there's more grading to put it on the east side.
Yes.
No, wait, again, I totally get it, but these meetings, sometimes they can kind of go out of control if I don't, you know, if I don't make sure that, yeah, folks, you know, keep their comments to the podium. So, um, so yeah, so it seems like there's more grading.
I'm throwing a bunch of mass right on the street, and the whole point of this project was to take and step the house up the hill and minimize the impact on the downhill neighbors and on the people walking along the street.
The visual impact?
A visual impact.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Can I ask one more driveway question of staff?
Yes.
Since we're on driveways.
Absolutely.
Um, what is, has anybody applied for a variance to increase the slope of the driveway with, within, say, the last four or five years? And what, what might that be?
Um, not to my knowledge, since, you know, actually since the new zoning ordinance has been updated, this is only the second project that has requested a variance of some sort. But we, these issue, the, the, the aspect of the driveway is extensively reviewed by the fire marshal, and they're pretty clear about the slope requirements for the driveway.
Thank you. That was it for driveway.
So, as far as, so another one of the major issues that were, that was, issues were, issues was?
It's okay, go with it.
An issue that was raised was the height. And you're, you're basically asking for three and a half feet.
Correct.
Um, have you done any studies on the effect as far as the shading of the downhill houses?
No, I haven't.
If I gave you two choices, and one of, the choice one was doing a, a survey of some kind to show the shade effects on the down, downhill houses, which would require you to come back another day, or choice two is reduce the height of your house by 3.5 feet, which of those two options would you choose? Now, I'm not saying that if you pick one, that's what you're going to get, but, I mean, I am sensitive to the effects of...
Light and shading.
Light and shading on the downhill homes, so, and I'm, I'm having a hard time figuring out what the effects on those houses are going to be without having a study, and we've had one of those before.
Right.
In fact, I think on the street.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I think it...
I was going to say, I think it was 151, actually.
So, so, if those were, if those were your only two choices, which one would you choose?
Have it, have it reviewed at staff level?
Well, I mean, the, the condition would be then, if, the, the condition that I would, would propose would be if the, if the additional three and a half feet added shade to the downhill homes, then you'd have to reduce your house by 3.5 feet.
How much shade, would be my question to you.
Significantly appreciable amount. An appreciable amount. I mean, you're, you're asking, again, I mean, this is just me, this is just me...
I understand where you're, I understand where you're coming from. I'm just looking at another big, you know, another month delay.
Sure.
Well, that's an optimist, a month, that's pretty optimistic. Go ahead. Think about that, we're, we're not done yet, so think about that, but that's where I personally am leaning, and unfortunately, you've only got, you need three votes, and there's only three of us here today. So, uh, so think about that, and don't answer right now, I'm just rubbing it on you.
So, we can talk about street conditions while he thinks about it?
Yeah.
Or something else?
Well, I, I don't want to, I don't want to stop you from asking about street conditions, but I swear we had this exact same conversation about street conditions when we approved 151. And I feel like making an inappropriate joke about how actually approving this will improve street conditions by making street conditions worse and increasing the likelihood that the street gets fixed. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Not a terrible thought process.
I mean, I remember having this conversation last time about how we can't make the applicant fix the street. I mean, the job to fix the street is the city's.
Right, and so my questions were of staff about, about what they have. So here's just a, just a couple quick questions. How much are the bonds that are put in place to the city that the developer has to put in place, that if they do damage the street, then we get to keep? How mu, how much is that? And I'm sorry if I'm stumping you.
Um, so Public Works will actually set that as part of the permit. As I mentioned before, since this is just a certificate, that will give them permission to apply for the permit. I don't know, I believe they're in the tens of thousands.
Damage?
I'm not sure. For instance, with 151, for example, when we do, and I'm not familiar with the grading aspect or permit of that, but with like the planning side as part of the final inspection, any conditions that you put in place, we will make sure are implemented prior to signing off, like we did for, for that, for 151. And I believe Public Works does the same things in terms of the road conditions. If the road, if an applicant causes damage specifically to the road, then Public Works can require them to fix it, and if they do not, then they have the bond money to pay for it, to do it. The city can pay for it.
Again, this is probably then more of a question for Public Works, it's okay if you can't answer, but does that mean the city then has retained the bonds that they've gotten from 151 and that we have that money? And do they have plans or a schedule to fix Coronado after the building spree is over?
One of the things that we would look at as part of this project, and our Public Works, our city engineer is aware of the, of the projects that have occurred on Coronado, so there is a recognition that coordination in terms of overall street repairs would need to be looked at. Certainly, the project at 151 Coronado, they have received temporary, a certificate of temporary, temporary occupancy, so all of the conditions haven't been satisfied yet, some of which are street repairs. But recognizing that making those street pair repairs while another project, at 147 Coronado is about to be issued their building permit along with this project potentially, I think we would need to craft a condition of approval where the Public Works Director and City Engineer review the timing and phasing of those repairs that need to be made. One of the things that we could add to this grading and dirt hall certificate is to do a pre and post, um, survey of the conditions of the road, so it's very clear in terms of the changes that are made as a result of this project. And that's also related to the dirt hall route in terms of which way they're going to be going. But again, because this is a certificus, there is a little bit of, you know, unknowns at this point, but again, once the Public Works Director and Engineer issue their certificate, they can put additional conditions and requirements in place.
And then just one more question, is this even something we can do? Can we even put weight limits? I know one of the, one of the members of the public had suggested weight limits on trucks, and I'm, is that even something that can be done, or, or should, should that, is that evaluated by Public Works also? I just don't even know if that's a condition that's ever been considered.
I don't know if specifically weight limits have been incorporated, but Public Works does take a look at the size of the truck, which, you know, would translate into weight, and there is a condition in the grading and dirt hall certificate where it states that smaller truck sizes may be required. So once the, they actually apply for the grading, the official more engineering-related permit, then they can address those concerns. But certainly if we want to put forward some additional clarifications or requests, at least for items for the Public Works to consider as they issue such grading and dirt hall permit, then we can incorporate those within this certificate here.
Thank you, those are all my questions on street condition, David.
Okay. Um, okay, so, uh, Mr. Peters, right? Would you like to come up for a moment?
Sure. Since we've seen this show a couple of times on Coronado, we're seem to having exactly the same discussion over and over. The problem always ends up being that how do you allocate the damage that's been done to this particular project? And so there's five projects going on at the same time, they're all hauling dirt, and so at the end of the day, the person building gets off the hook, and it's like, well, we can't really attribute it. And at the end of the day, we as residents are the ones holding the bag, and the street is in, as you heard today, it's in terrible condition, yeah? And it's, I, I don't know what you can do about it, but it's every time we get this condition, and it's like, yes, they're responsible, no, no money is ever held back, there's no money for repairs, and we're just on the list of San Carlos to repair when budget allows.
Okay. Um, real quick, sir.
Just to tag on the end there, by waiting until the end, you end up with a reconstruction of the road, not an overlay, I said that earlier.
Yes, sir.
That's true.
Um, okay, so let me just go through a couple of quick things. I assume that you would not mind a condition that said that you were not allowed to use anyone's private driveways without their permission?
Pretty much the construction requests that they've made about hauling hours, work hours, neighborhood meeting beforehand, completely all acceptable.
The introduction to the foreperson, the, you know, having an emergency phone number on the fencing during construction?
Oh, yeah.
Not a problem?
All that's, I have, pretty, there's not going to be an issue with that.
Okay. Uh, are, are there already dust control measures that are proposed as part of the, the...
I think there already are, best measured, BNP's?
Yeah, there's best management practices that all projects have to file, or follow, excuse me, as part of our statewide permit that the city has. So there's conditions put on each project when they come through building and, um, Public Works that include dust control, erosion, stormwater runoff, all of that during construction.
So, is there, and I may regret this, and if someone wants to come up, they need to do it quickly, but is someone who had experience with 151 Coronado that believes that their dust control practices were insufficient and wants to come up and explain why, I'm happy to, to hear of that, Mr. Peters?
I had the pleasure of living right in front of it. One of the main issues is it's not going to be a month, yeah? It's going to be a long, long time.
And I get that, but as far as like the measures themselves, like was there an excessive amount of dust despite what they were doing?
Yes, because the, the point is, it's not dirt haul, it's, it's basically, and so on, it's rock excavation that's happening. And my neighbor just mentioned, they, they broke six jackhammered drill bits while they did 151. Yeah, so it is really, it's not just you're scooping it out, yes, that's for like the two to five feet, yeah? And then you're, you're jackhammering, and that's jackhammering for three months going on. And the problem is, it's not dirt anymore, whatever the rock becomes double or triple the size, and this is all dust that now starts. It's not like you scrape it nicely and put it in a truck, and it's when you put it in a truck that there's some dust. Now, this is the jackhammering that's going on, that everything is in, is basically off-hauled in extremely small pieces. There's nothing bigger than a square inch that comes out of that site, that's the issue.
All right, I think actually I can, I can deal with that. I mean, I can, I can think of a condition that'll deal with that, I think. Okay, so...
Can I address the height, pretty quick?
Uh, yes, you can.
Um, and to the neighbor, from the uphill, me, from me, um, the base of your wall's at 166. I don't know how tall your retaining wall is. My house is, um, got to figure this out, it is less than 150. So we're 60, my roof is 16 feet below the base of your wall. I understand you look over the house, because you're above hill, but I wanted that to be clear that I'm...
I get it, I mean, I'm, I mean, it's not, it's not that I'm unsympathetic to views, I appreciate views. I'm actually a little bit more concerned about the downhill folks and their desire for sun.
And I'll take your offer to do the sun to continuation, to keep the extra three feet. I did look, we did look at the project with flat roofs instead of slope roofs, and it doesn't look as nice, I'll be honest with you.
Uh-huh.
Slope roofs add a lot, instead of just, it just adds a little bit more character and has the both sides of the wall, both sides of the...
So, so basically, I mean, what I would be proposing is one of two things, would be actually a condition that you do...
A light study.
A light study, and in the event that the light study indicates that an appreciable amount of, of sunlight is impacted by the additional three feet, the three feet are gone. The alternative would be to do a study and then come back, and at that point you could pitch again, you know, for your three feet. I mean, those are, those are the two options that I would, would offer you.
So, if, so you, can you explain it one more time?
Yeah, so I mean, if you want it to be done today, and again, I'm one vote, I'm still not sure what I'm doing, but, I mean, if you want not to come back, I'm not willing to approve an additional three extra feet if it's going to impact the sun of your, of your downhill neighbors.
Right.
So I can impose, if my colleagues agree, I can impose a condition that you lose those three feet if the study is done and it shows that those additional three feet have an appreciable impact on the, the amount of sun those downhill homes get. It'll be an automatic, you, you don't get those three feet. Or you can do your study and you can come back, and then we can talk again about if the study shows that you're impacted and you want to say, well, you don't think it's an impressionable impact and you want the three feet approved anyway, you could make that pitch again, but you would have to come back.
Okay, so if I, if I do the study and...
And staff says it's appreci, there's an appreciable effect, you're going to have to, you're done, and it's, you're going to have to cut it three feet.
Right, otherwise, I, otherwise I come back...
But then you have a different design, probably.
Yeah, and you may have to change the design and come back anyway.
No, otherwise I come back with the design and, and my defense as to why I need to keep the flat, those slope roofs.
Yep.
I'll do that, I'll keep, I want to keep the slope roofs, and come back with the, come back with the sun study.
Okay, well, then we're coming back anyway, but let's keep going for a little while.
Can we kind of limit what we have to come back for? That's my question.
Yeah, I think that's fair, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've done that, do you folks have any other questions for the applicant?
Um, give me one second.
Oh, trees, okay, so, so trees. There are, I'm going to break the tree issues up into at least two categories. One is trees that are going to impact the view of the homes above you. So I'm assuming that you are, are the trees that you are planning on planting, are they estimated to grow above the ridge line?
Um, I'd have to check, but if we want to put that as a condition, that's...
They not be above the ridge line?
That's not a problem.
You don't care about that?
Okay, basically provide screening between the two properties, that's what we're looking for.
So then let's talk about the trees that are coming out, would be coming out, that are adjacent to 181. So those are coming out because they impact the driveway?
Correct.
Okay. Are you able to plant trees adjacent to 181 that will provide within a reasonable amount of time the equivalent screening that there is between your property and 181 right now?
I think so, yes.
If that was a condition?
That was a condition.
You could do that?
Yes.
Okay.
I just have a quick question, and forgive me if this is a silly question, but have you already done a lot line survey? There was, the property owner just mentioned that he believes that...
We had a boundary survey done.
Good, okay.
We just had a recent survey done.
Okay, and I know that those, once those surveys are done, they're done, that makes sense to me, so I just wanted to make sure that that existed.
Done in November of last year.
November of last year, okay.
And, go ahead.
But that was the extent of my question.
And is there one oak in your, in your planting plan?
Yeah, I think there is, if you want us to come back with more native oak trees, that's fine, we can talk to the owner.
Native?
I don't have a problem with either.
All right, I think that's all I have.
You've hit pretty much everything I had.
In terms of, can I, in terms of the excavation, I know that's the big bone of contention with everybody.
When you say the excavation...
Or the off-haul?
Dirt haul?
Dirt hauling?
Sure.
So basically was, um, it's estimated at 250 truckloads, and it was based on the small truck, the 10-yard truck is what it was based on. So we're already at worst-case scenario, supposedly.
Well, based on what we've heard, you don't know what worst-case scenario is yet. You're about to experience worst-case.
Yeah, I hear it.
You're, you're hoping to experience worst-case scenario. Um, okay. Uh, all right, so any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, no, but I do have one more question for staff. Two of, two of the members of public commented on potential damage to neighboring structures, and I'm just curious what the city or planning commission or anybody else does to address this situation should it occur.
I assume that's the engineer who does that, right? I assume that's the engineer who does that, right?
Yes, and Andrea was gonna speak, but I'll go ahead first. If she has anything to add, she can. When the construction drawings are prepared and submitted to the building division to receive their building permits, there's always an independent third-party review of the soils report, the structural engineering designs, to ensure that the type of construction being done does not have any impacts to, you know, the surrounding area. Specifically, the engineers will take a look at some of the adjacent properties to see if there's any kind of relationship between the two structures. So for example, if one foundation of a home was kind of, had some sort of connection to the proposed foundation, they look at that. So that's something that they do well before any building permit is issued. And again, it's an off-site through a third-party review. So there's an extra level of review associated with those types of reports and documents.
And that's before construction, and let's just say, everybody goes through those safeguards, but something does happen, how does the homeowner address that? What would they normally do to address that situation?
Well, if there's something that occurs during the course of construction, the building inspectors go out, they probably have to stop work and reassess the situation and come up with any kind of alternative means or corrections that would need to occur.
Great. I'm sorry if I, Andrea, I'm sorry, did you have anything else to add? I didn't mean to, I thought I got you mid-sentence. Thank you both very much.
Okay.
That's it.
I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, so commission deliberation. I mean, for me, the, the only issue I'm still struggling with is the location of the driveway, and.
I'm, I'm with you there. I mean, I think that the compromise for the height and the light study makes, makes sense for that, waiting to come back and look at that. But this just seems like a troublesome place to put a driveway. It just does. And I see obviously the architect's concern and probably the homeowner's concern about being able to come out onto the patio and the orientation of the house. I mean, I'm, and I'm not taking that lightly, I really do see that. I'm just wondering if, I think that the street, the street situation might, might trump that for me. So that's kind of where I'm at, where I'm having some challenges.
I am as well. I think, so 151, your driveway is going the opposite direction as well. Almost every driveway is going in that direction. So it, it just seems like a safety issue, really. I mean, this is the only driveway going the opposite direction. And I think 147 was backing, I think that was a direct cut-in.
Direct cut-in.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, that's a concern.
I was hoping that someone would come up with some, you guys would both be okay with the driveway, or, you know, someone would come up with some sort of miraculous solution.
It's also why I had asked the question about whether there had been variances on the, on the slope, to see if maybe a centering of it would work.
See, that's not gonna, well.
But it doesn't seem to be.
Well, it's gonna be, the garage is gonna basically be the, the primary feature of the house if you stick it in the front.
I can see that completely, yeah. And obviously, with fire having a lot to do with evaluating that, I could see that not being a variance that's easily granted as well. So, yeah, I don't have any great solutions that come to mind, but that is, that was part of my line of questioning and my reasoning behind it, was seeing if there was some other magical compromise, and I can't think of it.
I mean, is there a way, Ms. Porras?
Yes, Steph.
I mean, if we, if we, could we approve it based on a requirement that, you know, Public Works come up with some mitigation measures or something?
Well, we have to come back anyway, right?
Well, yeah, but I mean, if we're, yeah.
Could they review it first and then give us a report? The Public Works review it first and give us a report, since we've already got to wait for the light study? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yeah.
Forgive my.
I suppose, because we're not, they're not asking us to grant any, they're not asking us to grant any variances related to the driveway, I guess, so we wouldn't need to approve any of those today.
Well, I was just gonna say too, if redesign of the driveway occurs as a result of Public Works or your choice, it might affect the natural state requirement, which they're asking for a variance from. So if you, you know, approve the variance for that and that request ends up changing due to grading from the driveway, they'd have to come back for a variance, again, for the natural state, because the numbers have changed. So it might make sense to do it all at the same time.
So I'm wondering if the best solution then is to ask for Public Works to review the safety of the drive, of the driveway as is, in time for.
What if Public Works determines that the driveway is just plain safe?
Then that might, that might make a determination in how, how we, how we vote.
Well, I mean, if the, if Public Works were to say, okay, the driveway is perfectly safe as is, we have no concerns, would we then approve the project as it is? Because if so, I mean, we should just have a, approve the project and have a contingency that says if Public Works deems the, the current configuration of the driveway unsafe, then the approval is void and they have to come back.
Right, but we're already having to come back for the light study anyway, so I guess I'm not really seeing why we would.
I'm trying to respect their desire to minimize the number of issues they have to come back on.
Well, I think we're talking about them, so I think that they have a pretty good idea as to what we're, you know, what the major concerns are. I mean, she's writing all this stuff down, so.
Well, is there, Andrea or Lisa, is there a better alternative than that?
Well, that was, that would have been my recommendation, is to require a condition in the approval that, that, you know, basically forwards this issue to the Public Works and city engineer for them to review the adequacy, the location of the curb cut, the driveway curb cut, and ensure that it's, that it's done in a way that doesn't present any safety issues. And if, and I think that's, I think that's the matter on the table, if it's done in such a way that is, you know, approved by the Public Works Department, deemed to be safe relative to the surrounding context, you know, would, would it be approved? Would it be something that the planning commission could support? Or, or is that just not the desired location for this, all things considered? But if it's something that the Public Works Department can.
Well, that's what I was proposing, so I'm okay with it.
That's what we would have mentioned.
I mean, ultimately, it's safety, not, I mean, safety is the only concern, in my opinion, when it comes to the driveway, not how it, not how it looks. So I guess if the professionals in Public Works deems it safe, then that, that would trigger approval on my part. I mean, that's, that would be where, where I would, where I would.
Where you.
Right.
Jesse.
Well, it is design review as well, so, I mean, we are talking about the design. I, I'm not, and I know there's only three of us here, and I'm not.
Your votes are very powerful tonight, much more powerful than usual.
Normally, we ignore your.
Normally, right? I wouldn't even ask you what you think normally. Sometimes I forget that you're here.
You know, I always, we had, we had this issue a little bit with, with the lots, but sometimes, you know, safety, although Public, you know, Public Works may deem it safe, I think there's logic that comes into play a lot with some, some of these projects.
You make a good point.
I mean, I don't, I think the orientation of the driveway is, is an issue for me. And it just, it's counterintuitive, you know, the driveway. I mean, every driveway is going the opposite direction, probably for a reason, and that, that road is very narrow. And, you know, it's a concern of mine, so I, you know, Public Safe, Public Works at times, you know, I don't see eye to eye on some of those, some of those things, you know.
So can we approve, can we approve anything if we don't approve the driveway?
I don't think we can, because it, I think, as Andrea said, it triggers other variance issues. It would have to, because the natural state variance that we'd be looking at, it would change it.
Maybe. It just, and I know I shouldn't consider this, and, no, no, I'm saying, we don't know whether it's going to trigger a change.
True, true.
So it could be, they could change the design and end up needing to use less of the property, in which case, they would still be within the variance we granted. You know, they could, you know, change the design and have the same, so you don't know. And I know I really shouldn't consider this, I mean, the, we have a five-member planning commission, but I just know that when one of these projects comes back and then you add, you know, more people, it, you know, it can change the dynamic and we could end up.
Much like it did in the last thing that we vetted on, yeah.
But I'm not gonna try and jam this down anybody's throat. I mean, if we need to come back, we need to come back.
I think we might be at an impasse here with regards to this driveway, but I understand the desire to move it forward. I mean, that's why we had a meeting today.
I guess then we're gonna continue it to a date, either certain or uncertain, to give an opportunity to have Public Works advise us regarding the safety of the driveway and to get the shade study.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, I don't know that we need to renotice it if we, if we continue it to a date certain.
Yes, through the chair, if you notice it to a date certain, we don't have to renotice, and I think everyone in this room, you know, they would be able to hear what the date is. The next available date that this could come back would be June 15th. In order to have Public Works review the location of the driveway and curb cut, that's something that the city could do in time for June 15th, but we'd have to check with the architect to see if the timing, he says he can make it work, so he could do the study in time for something to come back on June 15th.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, then, I would entertain a motion to continue this matter. Oh, well, I closed the public hearing, we're gonna have to reopen the public hearing, someone will need to remind me to do that, but we can continue, I'll entertain a motion to continue this to a date certain.
I'll move that we continue this matter to June 15th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So the matter is continued. And that's it for this one, you're welcome to stay for the other interesting things that we're gonna do for the next 10 minutes. So, reports on recent city council actions.
Let me see if I can get this right. I just would like, the commission may have, may be aware of this, but I would just like to make an announcement that the water conservation ordinance that was previously enacted by our city council has been withdrawn. And the reason for that is because Cal Water, our water provider, has issued water conservation requirements that are more restrictive than what our own local water conservation ordinance would have required. So that was recently repealed by the city council on the basis that Cal Water has something that's more restrictive. So a lot of this is, is moving and is very dynamic, as you're probably are aware, but I just wanted to make an announcement about that. The city council also recently approved the Wheeler project, Wheeler Plaza project, just right behind City Hall here, over on Walnut and San Carlos Avenue. It was required to go to the city council for a planned development permit, just like Transit Village, so following the recommendation from the planning commission, it was approved by the city council.
Were any changes made to what we approved?
No, I don't believe so. Nothing significant that I can recall. And I think that's it, in terms of city council actions.
Planning commission comments or reports?
None for me.
So I just wanted to wish a fellow planning commissioner from the city of Pacifica, his name is John Nivlin, it's his birthday today, and I wanted to wish him a happy birthday for the record.
Birthday, John.
Correspondence, other than what's already been identified for the record.
No further correspondence for this evening?
And any planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects?
Yes, our next planning commission hearing is on June 15th. On June 15th, the Landmark Hotel will be coming before the commission for your consideration of approval.
I mentioned that five minutes ago, go ahead.
The only other item on the agenda is a use permit at 505 Quarry, and this is kind of related to the Landmark Hotel. The two current tenants at the Landmark Hotel site, Advanced Sports Performance and Society, the city has been working with them on their relocation, and they found such a site at 505 Quarry. However, it does require a use permit, so the city is expediting that for them as part of the relocation assistance plan. And then we'll add in the item for 171. I think we can get it done, there were just a few, two issues, is my understanding, and we'll kind of reevaluate the conditions and maybe strengthen those up, so then when they come back to you, can see the changes that were made, you know, based on the information that you have tonight and what we're proposing to tie up some of those loose ends.
I probably should have noted for the record while we were still on the item, some of the things that I think we were leaning towards having conditions on, but hopefully you can kind of suss those out from the comments.
We've got a lot of notes that we've taken, so I kind of get a sense of what those are. Okay.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you very much, everyone. Meeting adjourned.